Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, March 7, 2016. We are here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's 8:15. I would ask that you all join me and rise in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, I ask that you call the roll.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Honquist.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. Things a little bit different this evening. To start with, Agenda Item 2.1, that's a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Joel Morris and Diane McGinnis to meet me down here. Right here is a good one. Why don't you guys stand here? Okay, just allow me a few minutes to introduce the folks we have here and say a little bit about Parkinson's and Parkinson's awareness. I often say in speeches that I give when I have an opportunity to speak to folks in public, what do I like most about being mayor or what's one of the best things about Elmhurst? And I can tell you this, a common theme of mine is that we have 44,000 people in town who care. This is a town that gets involved. If they see a problem, they want to fix it. There is never a shortage of volunteers. We have over 18 boards and commissions in the city of Elmhurst with over 100 volunteers, not to mention all the elected officials and everyone else who pitches in. So I am proud to honor today with a proclamation, and I'm not going to read all of the whereas's, and I'm going to invite Joel Morris up here. Many of you know Joel Morris. He's a friend of the city and resident of Elmhurst, and I'll let him speak when he gets up here. But most recently, Joel has gotten involved and wanted to raise awareness of Parkinson's in the city of Elmhurst, going so far, if you know Joel, he's not one to sit back and let things slide, going so far as to work with the local community and develop a Parkinson's Disease Support Group. So I'm going to hand this proclamation over. Let me just read the good stuff, though. Now therefore, I, Steve Morley, Mayor of the city of Elmhurst, to hereby designate the month of April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, and I'm going to ask Joel to come on up, and he's going to explain some of the things that he's been doing along with the hospital.
Great. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Let me take just a couple of minutes and just make a few general kind of comments.
Do you want to use the mic?
Why do you use the mic? If I could make just a few general kind of comments. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for the proclamation and for proclaiming April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. I'd also like to recognize the leadership and the enthusiasm of the staff at Elmhurst Memorial Hospital who have embraced this support group project, and Diane McGinnis, who's in charge of community and government relations, is here with me tonight. Parkinson's is a chronic disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative illness after Alzheimer's. Parkinson's Disease affects over a million people in the United States and is the 14th leading cause of death. What makes the support group so important is that Parkinson's symptoms and development vary from person to person. A support group allows not only for the education from the medical professionals, but the opportunity for individuals who have Parkinson's and their families and caregivers to share insights and to work together to create a higher quality of life. Agencies and businesses have joined, as the mayor commented, with Elmhurst Memorial Hospital to assist in the development of the Parkinson's Support Group. While some communities around us have had these support groups for a number of years, I know that the synergy which is created when the members of the Elmhurst community come together to cause this program to become not only a model for the state, but potentially a model for the nation. First session of the Parkinson's Support Group is scheduled for 1 o'clock on April the 28th at Elmhurst Memorial Hospital. We are in the process of distributing invitations to the community to provide information to those individuals who might wish to participate in the support group. I have provided, I've given it to the city clerk, and she's going to get the information out to you at whatever, I guess, is the appropriate time, but I provided copy of these comments, the names of the members of the steering committee, a list of the local businesses and agencies that support the program, copy of the flyer for the advertising program, and a Parkinson's Awareness wristband. You can see it's a beautiful gray, so it matches all of the things in your closet. Thank you for all the opportunity to spend the time talking about this, and I appreciate your support very much.
I want to round of applause for Bill Morris. I'm with Agenda Item 3, written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communications they wish to submit for further distribution? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. Agenda Item 4, public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask, out of respect for the work that we have to do here this evening and out of other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over your three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. When you are identified, we ask that you approach this microphone over here, and we are taping this, so we ask that, for the record, you state your name, and address is optional. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 Northwest Gladys. Excuse me.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Council's got to decide what side of the ballot it's on. Council can't claim that the increase in the footprint of houses being built in this town has no effect on flooding, and at the same time pass ordinances saying, "Well, use water barrels, put in raw gardens, put in brick paving driveways, put tanks under your driveway." And if that all fails, the final ordinance is, "Well, if your land or your house, it doesn't have a certain amount of area, you're going to have to pay for, by the cubic foot, for the water that is not absorbed." You can't have both. If the houses don't have an effect, then eliminate all the ordinances you passed. Don't say houses are built and they put tanks under their driveway. There's no need for it. The size of the footprint doesn't have an effect. You got a line going in on First, four footer. You argued about a valve for York Commons. The county has limited how much water you can put in that quarry. I'm sure they're going to keep track of what the flow is. Is there going to be a sluice gate there to shut it off when you reach that quantity? You can't go beyond it. You're limited to it. You signed agreements. That doesn't really hold much for this council. And it's changed to plastic water lines. You voted it in. You also gave a speech about the fact that the state came up with a new state building code, but the city Elmhurst held out for copper. Argument is, "Well, a copper line, when water freezes, it'll bust." What's going to happen with the plastic? It's going to blow up into balloons? It's an experiment. I don't care about Europe. I don't care about the rest of the United States. You had a fine system, copper. Why did the council, all of a sudden, decide after fighting to keep copper in the building code to change it to plastic and limit it to residential and commercial? If it's such a fine product, then use it industrial. Don't limit it. It replaces a fine product that's existed for a long time. And if it's just as good or better, then let it fill in the entire building code.
Mr. Pagash, could you wrap your comments up, please?
Don't make any exceptions. If it's not as good, then you shouldn't have voted it in.
Kathleen Sullivan.
Kathleen Sullivan. Today, Monday, March 7, is NPC International Badge Day. Sorority women around the country and around the world are celebrating by wearing their badges, a symbol of their membership, even their sorority letters or colors. Thank you.
That's all who signed in tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for everyone who had an opportunity to sign in. Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet when they came in but wishes to address the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes public forum. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, the Chicago Tribune published a guidebook to museums called Museums 101, and if they named just five must-see Chicagoland museum experiences of 2016, the exhibit "But Wait, There's More," which will be at our own Elmhurst History Museum this summer, was included. It features the inventions of Ron Popeil and the, who's the inventor behind the kitsch gadgets like the Chop-O-Matic and the Pocket Fisherman. The exhibit runs June 17 through September 18.
Great. Any other announcements from the dais? Clerk Spencer.
Just want to remind everyone, early voting continues this week in council chambers. It will stop on March 12, and the hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 through AM to 7:30 PM, and Saturday, last day, March 12, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then the election will be on March 15. And if you need to know your polling place, call the DuPage County Election Commission at (630) 407-5600. They'll help you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Levin?
I just wanted to make the council aware that this was a big weekend for York High School hockey. Both the junior varsity and the varsity teams, for the first time ever, won the Western Suburban Conference, and so I wanted to congratulate them.
Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. Final reminder for the ECAF Casino Night on March 19 at 7:00 PM. It's going to be at Diplomat West, and it's a casino night. It's a lot of fun, and they have big screen TVs for those of you who are hooked on NCAA basketball and can't get away from it. It's a really good time. It supports a very good cause here in Elmhurst. The website for more information is www.ecaf, the number for kids, dot org.
Okay. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to announce that the Public Works and Buildings Committee will be starting at 6 o'clock next Monday. We have a pretty full agenda, so we're going to get started early. One of the items we're going to be talking about is the IGA for Golden Meadows Park, and our intention is hopefully to get through it in that meeting with a report so that we'll be back in front of the council here on the 21st to deliberate that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda, Agenda Item 6. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed, to vote no, or for further explanation or discussion? Alderman Bram?
Two items, Mr. Mayor, 6.7 and 6.23.
6.7, 6.23. Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Healy, do you have anything you wish removed from the agenda? Alderman Palmsky? Give me one second. Sure. I'm sorry. Alderman Healy?
6.8, please. We want to pull that back.
We'll give an explanation. And 6.20 because it's associated with that.
6.2 and 6.8. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay. I will now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items 6.7, 6.8, 6.20, and 6.23. Motion to approve consent agenda minus those items. Motion by Alderman Dunn, second by Alderman Sabatino. Clerk Spencer, please call the roll.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Oh, he's...
You've got two ayes there. Just switch them up.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Okay, Bram.
Aye.
Threw me off, too, but that's all right. Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Consent agenda minus Items 6.7, 6.8, 6.20, and 6.23 is approved. On to the first item pulled, which is 6.7. Oh, there it is. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city council authorize the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents for approval of the Explore Elmhurst Express Trolley Program, signed by Chris Healy, Chairman, Danny Palmsky, Vice Chairman, Norm Leader.
Okay. To put this before council, I am going to ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palmsky. Alderman Healy, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is simply the marketing plan and the details behind the trolley program for this year. As council will recall, during the budget conversation, we talked about the trolley program and how we were going to augment it this year. So what you see before you now is simply the execution, the plan of attack, and how the trolley program will be different this year with enhanced marketing, business involvement. The route was changed. The route wasn't changed. A stop was eliminated, but it's just a culmination of what we want to see from the trolley program this year.
Okay. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, I did not vote to support the trolley because I did not think there's adequate time for quality marketing. And in fact, in the report that we have, there are some points that are listed, what was missing last year. It's acknowledged a trolley program branded in a marketing campaign, support from our community partners, a website where one can find information about the program and what it represents, and also measurement. But this year, with the polished Explore Elmhurst campaign encouraging residents and visitors to ride, explore, eat, and shop, our new communications manager, Cassandra Schreff, has devoted the time and attention necessary for a successful program. Additionally, this year, there was time to collaborate with partnering representatives from groups such as business associations, hotels, Elmhurst Park District, the library, cultural institutions, events hosted in town, and others, to leverage all the marketing resources available to us to get the word out. I've never seen a campaign anywhere so far-reaching in its effort to support local businesses, engage their customers, and showcase a community.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bram, you pulled this. Four is yours.
Yes, thank you. When this was initially discussed, I did not support it. It wasn't essentially just in regards to the marketing aspect, as Alderman Palmsky touched on for her rationale of not supporting it back then. It was making sure we had the appropriate program, and it seemed like we were going at a rabbit's pace last year going through. I am happy to see a really detailed plan this year for the trolley program with details on the marketing aspect and what the route, well, it's pretty much the same as last year, as Alderman Healy already stated, what the route is, you know, other incentives for people to ride the trolley and visit our businesses downtown. But I want to segue now into my concerns of what has been proposed and what has been said before. Before being the first time that we initiated the trolley program in 2015, the update that we received, the memo that we received in December of 2015 of how the trolley program went in 2015, and what was forecasted for 2016. In the memo from December 10, 2015, and there's no actually signature on who it's from, I assume it's from the city manager or city staff, but at the page one on the bottom, it says trolley expenses totaled at $37,531.71. Out of the total amount, $20,626 was spent on operations, so the trolley itself, and $9,971.71 was spent on advertising and print materials, and approximately $7,000 was spent on the program facilitator. I'm not sure what the program facilitator is, but that's beside the point. On page two of that same memo, it shows recommendations for 2016. The city has budgeted $50,000 for the Explore Elmhurst Express Trolley Program in 2016, $40,000 for the trolley to operate, $10,000 for the market program, marketing program. When we had the discussion back in December, as well as in 2015, I inquired on why the route was the route, and I was told it was a pilot route. And once we get past this first pilot year, we'll look to explore it. When we had the update, I asked the same questions over again, and it was said, "Well, we can't afford to expand the route. We're going to leave it the same because it would double the cost." And the presentations that we have from city staff, which as I've already stated is very detailed, actually states, and I'll quote it verbatim, "Extending the route was not possible this year. It would require two trolleys, which would double the cost," the same rationale I heard in the December update. But then I'm confused. We extended the timeframe, and the cost of $20,000 to operate it last year is now $40,000 this year, which, if I do simple math, 20,000 times 2 is 40,000. It doubled. We couldn't expand the route to the north side, to anywhere past North Avenue or further to the south side because it would double it. But we did double it. We doubled, we increased the timeframe, which I don't know if that, those few weeks, caused the doubling of the cost to operate the trolley, but no matter what it is, the contract that we have from the trolley company or the proposal that we have is now $40,000, which we said we couldn't afford to do to expand the route. So it seems like something is disjointed here. The presentation says we can't afford expanding the route because it would double the cost. We heard from other aldermen that we couldn't expand the route because it would double the cost, but we doubled the cost. So how are we not being able to afford to double the cost when we did it anyway? Not only did we double the cost from the operations perspective, but we more than doubled, about five times the amount from a marketing perspective, from $9,000 to $47,000, or $57,000. I don't remember the exact numbers. So we went from the program where it was at about $40,000 to close to $100,000 this year, but we couldn't expand the route in any way, shape, or form. But somehow, we doubled, or more than doubled the overall cost, as well as doubled the operations cost and quadrupled, at bare minimum, the marketing side of it. So I dug a little deeper to understand, well, where's this money coming from? Well, last year, it came from two accounts in the budget. This year, we're dipping into three accounts in the budget. Now, I don't know, I didn't look it up, but I don't know what the admin account has to do with the trolley, but we're taking $5,000 out of the admin account. We're dipping into the same account as we did last year, but the other account, 6045, 4546045, where the most of the dollars are proposed to come from, is coming from an account that we didn't utilize last year either. So we don't have money to do part of it, but we do have money to expand the timeframe and do additional marketing. I'm not sure on why we took a stance of saying that we can't afford to double it, and we double it anyway.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Healy.
Just as a point of clarification, the materials provided with the marketing funds, that's not just for trolley marketing. That's for the rebranding of Explore Elmhurst. So the web design, the web pages, everything else that's associated with Explore Elmhurst is tied up in that money. So it's not strictly trolley marketing. Trolley marketing is not $57,000. That's the entire Explore Elmhurst rebranding, which we've been discussing for quite some time.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Follow-up to Alderman Healy's comments, I mean, and I might be misinterpreting the data that's presented by sitting staff in the presentation, but 7,500 of that is clearly marked as for the rebranding. The rest of it makes no mention of Explore Elmhurst in regards to the rebranding of it, but it seems to me, being in this presentation for the trolley, that the other, approximately $50,000, $49,500, was meant for the marketing of the trolley.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Thirteen ayes, one nay.
Thirteen ayes, one nay. Motion to approve the report carries. Motion is approved. 6.8 and 6.20, I know Alderman Healy pulled these. In talking with staff, it's my understanding that both of these are on there, and while presentations were given to Public Affairs and Safety, what's actually ended up being done with this group that wants to support Peyton O'Brien does not require council approval. So that's why that information was pulled off. Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for the moment there where I forgot to pull these things. And the main reason we're pulling them, as the mayor suggested, as said, what Peyton's family, friends want to do will not require use of city assets, will not require use of city streets. In fact, they're only crossing one area. They're going to cross a street on Poplar on the Prairie Path that's going to be restricted pretty much either to the Prairie Path or from the Knights of Columbus Hall to the Prairie Path. So they did not need to go through the city process of permitting, insurance, et cetera. So we reviewed it, and it wasn't until after that we really decided, you know, we don't need to go through the entire checklist, if you will, to hold this event because they're just not using city assets nor city right-of-ways, et cetera.
Okay. On to Agenda Item 6.23, which was pulled. It's an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
MCO-05-2016, an ordinance to amend Section 16.11 entitled Service Charges of Chapter 6 entitled Garbage and Rubbish of the Municipal Code of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. Service charges for refuge collection.
Okay, this is ordinance following up to a report approval from last meeting. To put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will defer to Alderman Bram, who pulled this item.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this item, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing more to add from the discussion a couple of weeks ago. Um, uh, at, at that time, I had a minority report. I still believe that the leveling of the administration cost is not appropriate, has not been appropriate, and until we actually get the true cost from, um, in the waste hauler, i- it won't be appropriate, uh, so I cannot support the ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Honquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
13 ayes, one nays.
Uh, 13 ayes, one nay, motion carries, uh, ordinance is approved. That's it for items that were pulled by consent agenda, honor reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. 7.1, Mayor Morley, that's me, a couple of announcements or, uh, reports this evening. Uh, first is, um, as, uh, Alderman, uh, Levin alluded to, we had our, uh, St. Patrick's Day Parade, uh, we always make sure that we're at least a week ahead of, um, uh, Chicago, uh, we don't wanna have any conflicts, uh, that does a couple of things. Um, it gives, uh, City of Elmhurst two St. Patrick's Days to celebrate, which I think is a good thing for the businesses in town, I know they appreciate it. Um, it was a relatively nice day, uh, and a relatively uneventful day, I mean that in the best way, but we had a fantastic, uh, parade, uh, the governor joined us, um, and, uh, happy to announce that, uh, he said that he will be coming back every year, as long as he's governor, um, and, uh, not only that, he stayed at Silverado for about an hour and a half during the parade. Uh, so governor, uh, appears to really like Elmhurst, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, all the, uh, elected officials who, uh, joined, uh, City of Elmhurst walked, and, uh, it was a great day. Uh, actually, the day started out at 8:00 AM, the annual, uh, college, uh, president's breakfast at Elmhurst College, I think as most of you are aware, um, uh, college has been looking for a president, uh, in the interim, Larry Brasskamp, uh, who was a previous president, I believe at a couple of facilities, a couple other, uh, universities, took over in the interim and did a heck of a job. Um, he, uh, so, uh, several folks were at this breakfast, um, some folks up here on the dais and city staff, and, uh, it was great to get an update from Larry Brasskamp. In addition, uh, I think most are aware that, um, the college did, uh, hire a new president, Troy Van Aken, who starts June 1, Kevin?
July 1st.
July 1st, starts July 1st, um, and I encourage you to go online and read more about him, he's a very impressive individual, uh, I had an honor of meeting him, um, when it was announced. Myself, along with, uh, Aaron VanderWaal and, uh, city manager Grabowski, hosted a, uh, Realtor meeting, there was a, um, there's a, uh, statewide real estate organization, what's the name, Jim?
Illinois Association of Realtors.
Illinois Association of Realtors, you'd think I'd remember that. It's, it's tough to, I, I thought, I thought it was Indiana Association of Realtors. Anyway, um, they're, uh, College of DuPage, and they're, they're, uh, an agency that works on government relations, and, um, they're, uh, they're gentlemen who, uh, working on government relations in DuPage County, set up an opportunity for the City of Elmhurst to share with local realtors, um, uh, a couple of things. We shared with, a lot of developments in town that were happening, uh, we also were able to answer and dispel a lot of myths as it relates to stormwater mitigation. It was a very productive, uh, conversation, Q and A, uh, not only did we talk about general stormwater mitigation, but we went over specifically every project that's going on this year. And I can tell you that at the end of it, um, the folks that attended were very impressed, uh, with the amount of work that, uh, staff and council is putting into this, um, putting into this, uh, process, if you will. That having been said, uh, I will make council aware, uh, and I believe council is aware that I signed the IGA that council approved for York Commons, we are in receipt of, uh, Park District's signature, so that project, um, is officially signed off between the two, uh, that's the second one, between two intergovernmental bodies. I know that, um, Howard and staff will be talking more about it at, uh, the, uh, public, uh, Public Works Committee a week from now, but, uh, I wanted the public to know that, uh, that agreement has been signed off on, um, that's, uh, that's, um, in the works for this year, in fact, uh, Park District would like to see if we can get it done before the pool opens, so that's gonna be going lickety-split, uh, that's also good news. Um, last thing, Alderman Levin had mentioned about the York High School, um, uh, hockey team, I think that's great. One other thing happened at York High School over the weekend, the, uh, girls' York High School indoor high jump record was shattered this weekend, and, uh, I want to, uh, send a shout-out to that young lady, we're all very proud of her.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Who was the person that broke that record?
Uh, Jeanette Morley, actually.
Jeanette Morley, no relation.
No, absolutely related, she's my daughter, and, uh, she broke the high jump record this weekend, so, uh, congratulations to her. That's it for me on the report. City manager Grabowski.
Thank you, I have two items. Uh, this Saturday, the, uh, Elmhurst Lions Club will be hosting their annual pizza party at Sandburg Junior High, uh, that starts at 5:00 PM, it's all-you-can-eat pizza, uh, you can go to any Lions Club member for tickets, including me, or if you can't get hold of any of us, Barb Savage at Community Bank has the tickets. Uh, the second item is awareness for the council, uh, over the weekend, unfortunately, we had an accident at Butterfield and York, the intersection, early Saturday morning, which, um, not only was a bad accident for the vehicles, but it took out the controller box for the traffic signal. So if you've been through that intersection, since Saturday morning, it's been on blinking red. Uh, public works staff has been working, uh, as hard as they can to get a company in there to try to, at least temporarily fix it and put it back to regular traffic signals. The problem is, uh, the controller box, which is on the northwest corner, was taken off of its, um, uh, foundation, and it's my understanding there's some fiber that goes in there that was, uh, severed as well, and so it's gonna be a very difficult and probably expensive fix for us. Fortunately, uh, we, uh, we were able to get insurance information from the two drivers, so we'll be, of course, going after the insurance company for reimbursement on that, uh, but in the meantime, bear with us, we're doing everything that we can to get that fixed as quickly as possible.
Okay. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Any other business this evening? Uh, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.